All right, first up this evening, we had an executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed a personnel matter. In that discussion, there was one vote taken, the vote was seven to zero. We discussed a couple of different litigation issues. There was one vote taken for those litigation's issues. The vote was five to two to go forward with the litigation. And then on the third, for the consideration of acquisition or lease of property, we agreed with the, a recommendation from the town administrator which he's going to go forward with, the vote on that was seven to zero. I would also like to take this moment to thank the members of the Portsmouth Fire Department, Portsmouth Police Department, also the surrounding communities that helped out last Saturday night when we had a very serious accident involving five of our teenagers here in town. If not for the quick actions of our fire department, police department, there very well would have been fatalities and I thank them, Middletown, Navy, Newport, and Bristol for covering as well, and the quick actions that helped save those five children's lives. Thank you, gentlemen, I don't know how many of you, if any of you guys were on call that night, but thank you very much. And Howard, if you can pass that along to the rest of the gentlemen, I'd appreciate Next up, we have our consent agenda, we have our bills, two sets of bills since we missed, oh, sorry, I'm going to cover one more thing. We did have, we didn't have a scheduled meeting, we had a very quick interim meeting which was attended by myself, Mr. Keston, Mr. Gleason, and Ms. Pedro. There were two small items on there. One was to reapprove an easement for a pole for National Grid, to consolidate two poles into one pole, that was holding up power, new power requirements for the Abbey's new science building. And then also to approve an entertainment license for a fundraiser for young Gabe Little, Littlefield, who's a 10-year-old boy who's fighting cancer right now, and that was happening within the timeframe of our meeting, so we approved both of those items. Next up, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, we have bills from both 2017 and 20, 2017-18 and 2018-19. We'll start with 2017 and 18, any questions on those bills? Mr. Gleason.
I just have a question about the billing to DPW for the lamp repairs down on Park Avenue. Do we go after insurance claims for that, or is that just scheduled maintenance work, Ryan?
Yeah, if we know the cause of the damage or the party of the damage, we always go after the insurance company. In this case, I don't think we knew either.
Vandalous. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Pedro.
Thank you. Under, um, the transfer station, there's the shred fast for our, um, for the shredding Isn't there money in the recycling fund for that? Um, don't we get?
Or a different question, can we use money from the recycling rebate to?
From the recycling fund, yeah.
To do?
To do that.
I believe we haven't.
Because that's, that's just showing as cost to run the transfer station, and it really isn't.
We can certainly look into that, I see no reason why we haven't received a rebate for recycling yet.
And we don't have any leftover from before?
There's none that I know of, no.
All right.
Anyone else with questions? Next up, we have the other bills from this year, 2018 and 19, any questions on that Hearing none, we'll move on to CRMC and RIDEM joint public notice. Can I do them all at once? Okay, I'll do item one first. Motion received and placed on file, the bills.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes six to one. Next up, we have a CRMC and RIDEM joint public notice, the application for New England Boatworks at One Lagoon Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, for the state of Rhode Island Ascent and Rhode Island dredge permit for Rhode Island quality certification. It project includes the expansion of work approved under Ascent 2016-10-9-098, current proposal of 500 linear feet of bulkhead, existing Marina Basin installation of four new 115-long floating docks, and additional 23,500 cubic yards of dredging onsite beneficial reuse material. So they're going to dredge the basin and dump it onsite someplace and reuse it, I'm paraphrasing. Motion received and placed on file.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we are sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. First up, we have an annual Victorios license for the new Patriot West LLC doing business as Patriot Petroleum, 2340 West Main Road, and also a holiday license for the same location, Patriot West LLC doing business as Patriot Petroleum, 2340 West Main Road.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, and that is for both items, Mr. Keston?
It is.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero. And we have an annual peddler's license for Candace Sherman doing business as CL Sherman and Company, PO Box 3633, Newport, Rhode Island.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero. We have two peddler's licenses for a specific event, Firefly Yogurt and Wellness Festival at Glen Park on 9/15/18, for Nicole Waybright at 72 Branch Pike in Smithfield, and then for Meredith Eunson doing business as Be Well Essential Lifestyle at 25 Cogden Avenue, Newport, Rhode Island.
Motion to accept, uh, yeah, motion to approve.
Seconded.
Wow.
All those in favor, you're, 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 one, one item up on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have a request to advertise for a public hearing, the application to transfer a Class BV beverage license from the Newport Beach, TNBC Beach Club LLC doing business as the Newport Beach Club, 195 Newport Harbor Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, to TNBC Beach Club LLC. This is due to change in stockholders to Northern Waterfront LP to Velocity NBC LLC. So there's a change of ownership, they want to transfer the license, do I have a?
Motion to advertise for a public hearing.
Date certain?
Three weeks.
It would be for advertising on the 9th and 17th, public hearing will be on September 1st.
Okay.
Seconded.
Ms. Pedro, just make that part of your most sure, it's be the 20, meeting on the 24th?
Meeting on the 24th.
Of September, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Licensed Commissioners.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have minutes from the meeting of 7/23/18, and also 8/8/18. So 7/23, you have any questions on those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero, and then the 8/8 meeting, someone to my left.
Motion to approve the 8/8, 18 minutes.
Any second from one of you, yes?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, and three abstentions. Thank you. Next up, we have tax vouchers, tax vouchers of 8/2017/18, or 2018-0827-1 to 2018-027-18.
Motion to approve.
One of this one.
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and one recusal, Mr. Keston is recusing because of a conflict, so we have the motion passing six, zero, and one recusal. Next up, we have the town administrator's report, Mr. Rayner.
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen. My first update is in regard to John King, our Emergency Management Agency Director. Unfortunately, Mr. King has taken seriously ill and has been placed in hospice at St. Anne's Hospital in Fall River. The staff of Portsmouth VOC, Emergency Operations Center, have been informed and we are working currently to back, to fashion a succession plan. I'm sure I echo everyone's sentiment when I say that he and his family are in our thoughts and prayers. Next up, Mr. Councilman Gleason has asked for an update regarding capital improvements at Glen Farm. So far, we have installed new underground drainage cutters, a new septic system, new fascias office, new sump pumps in the Polo Barn in the 1907 building, we've removed 10 dumpsters of refuse, we've initiated roof repairs, we've installed two new cupolas, we placed a new sign at East Main and Linden Lane, and we demolished and removed two decayed wooden buildings used as sheds. Our capital improvement plan for this fiscal year includes a new fire escape for the 1907 building, a new furnace for the same building, and painting repair, repair of the east gable wall, and repairs to the trusses and roof on the indoor riding ring. Additionally, the tenant has repaired and replaced 18 windows in the Polo Barn, painted all exterior doors, repaired and upgraded the Polo Barn, main barn, and bull barn animal stalls, regraded swales for better water flow and built bridges across them, repainted, replaced carpet, and installed new appliances in the program barn apartment, installed new gates at the outdoor ring, upgraded the polo tack room, remediated the outdoor paddocks, and repaired and improved the viewing room in the indoor riding ring. Additionally, I was asked to provide a, an update on the status of the Phelps House, also known as the Red Cross House. The Phelps House was included originally in the list of properties when we issued the RFP for the Glen Farm stables. The ultimate concessionaire did not take on the Phelps House, the Phelps House, but we did receive a proposal for the Phelps House as a standalone contract. The bidder proposes restoration and rehabilitation of the Phelps House in a historically appropriate federal revival style to be used for short-stay rentals. Our Director of Business Development has been working with the bidder and appropriate staff to prepare a proposal for the town council to consider at a later date this fall. I'd like to report that the annual Rhode Island Public Works rodeo was held on August 15th at Johnston High School. Our DPW sent two teams, and it's my pleasure to announce that Neil Bellevue and Joel Coesgarden came in first place from our department. With this first-place finish, the Rhode Island Public Association has awarded them a scholarship to attend the American Public Works Association Western Snow and Ice Conference and the National Snow Rodeo in Colorado from September 26th to 28th. The Rhode Island Public Works Association Scholarship will pay for their travel, hotel, and meals for this event. I also would like to report that on Friday, the 31st, staff attended the annual Required Open Government Summit held at Roger Williams University. Online training is available for those that could not attend, and the town clerk is tracking completion dates and forwarding completion certificates to the Attorney General's Office. We have, since our last meeting, signed the contract with Jacobs Engineering for the facility condition assessment of our infrastructure. Jacobs is working with our facilities manager and the Director of DPW to finalize the assessment schedule. We anticipate the assessment to begin Tuesday, September 11th, with the report for the town to be completed by early October. It's also my pleasure to announce that the town of Portsmouth was presented with the Quality and Construction Award from the National Asphalt Paving Association for Prudence, for the Prudence Island Narragansett Avenue paving project. This award recognizes excellence in asphalt paving for 2017, and I congratulate our Department of Public Works, VHB Engineering, and our contractor PJ Keating for the work they did in completing this complicated project professionally and earning this recognition. With respect to Prudence Island, there is an ongoing power issue on Prudence Island resulting in under voltage problems. We have been working with National Grid through our liaison, Mr. Jacque Afonso, to remedy the situation. National Grid is aware of the problem, which is being reviewed by their engineering, design, and operations departments. In the meantime, National Grid is reviewing the settings of a capacitor bank that maintains the voltage at the end of the feeder for Prudence Island. A longer-term solution is to install a voltage regulator. There is no timeline for this installation, but it is targeted for installation later this year. Mr. Afonso will be present at the annual meeting on Prudence Island, September 15th, to update the residents and address their concerns. And staying on the subject of National Grid, in preparation for the upcoming hurricane season and the follow-on winter, our town planner and public safety officials met with National Grid last week to review and update our storm response measures and emergency points of contact. At our last council meeting, you tasked me to assemble an ad hoc working group to study shoreline access and the issues residents face regarding rights of ways to the shore. We issued a press release and accepted members to the group up to August 17th. Our next step is to establish a kickoff meeting date where we intend to have representatives from CRMC and/or DEM to discuss rules, ordinances, and municipal responsibilities associated with granting access to the shoreline, and from there, we will establish an agenda for a way forward. I'd like to report that the national night out in Portsmouth was held Tuesday, August 7th, at Sandy Point Beach. I'd like to thank our recreation director, the beach staff, and the Portsmouth Police for all their hard work towards making this night a success. We've received many compliments from residents who appreciated the movie, the pizza, the games for the kids, and have thanked the town for holding this annual event. Of important note to the abutters of Tank Farms IV and V, Naval Station Newport is holding a public meeting to discuss the Newport Naval Station solar project at those tank farms. The meeting will be held at the Courtyard Marriott in Middletown, and will start at 6:30 PM, and again, that's this Wednesday, and the public is invited. Residents who abut this project have been informed. And lastly, we will be visited by the right, I got to get the title correct, the right worshipful, the Lord Mayor of Portsmouth, England, Counselor Lee Mason. He will arrive in Portsmouth this week for a three-day visit, and he'll arrive on Thursday. He'll be met by a small group from the Portsmouth Historical Society who have arranged his itinerary over the next few days. His first stop will be a tour of the State House arranged by Senator Jim Sevigny, and then he'll pay a brief visit to the Portsmouth Boys and Girlstown. On Friday, he will tour the Old Colony House and other Newport historic sites. Friday evening, he will be hosted to an evening reception at the Portsmouth Historical Society. On Saturday, he will take a tour of local historic sites with our town historian Jim Garmon, and then attend the USA England Polo Match. Prior to his departure on Sunday, there will be a cola and cake with the Lord Mayor reception that is open to the public at Glen Park from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I'd invite everybody to please stop by Glen Park on Sunday, the 1st of September, to say hello and maybe get a photo with the Lord Mayor, Lee Mason. From Portsmouth, he will visit Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and then Portsmouth, Virginia, thereby connecting all three Atlantic Portsmouth's who are members of the Portsmouth Atlantic Compact, a loose organization created during Portsmouth's 375th anniversary to foster cultural and economic ties among these four communities. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rayner? Ms. Pedro?
Quick question, when, when you were talking about the rights of way and the ad hoc group that you formed, and you said you're going to have another meeting with reps from CRMC and DEM, did you consider, I know that a lot of the right-of-ways are CRMC, but there are a lot of right-of-ways that are Portsmouth as well?
Correct.
And did you consider having different rules for different types of right-of-ways?
I think this is something that will be tackled by the group, the, the purpose of inviting DEM and CRMC is just to establish a baseline of knowledge for what the rules are in general in the state of Rhode Island regarding rights of ways, why they exist, what they're for, and bring everybody up to speed with respect to current rules and ordinances.
But the Portsmouth ones, we can have our own rules.
That's correct, but I wanted to establish a baseline, and from there, we can have an honest discussion about where we, where we want to and should deviate, and I anticipate we'll probably be doing, or probably working very closely with the Harbor Commission, who is already tackling some of this work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rayner, for the updates on Glen Farm and the Phelps House. I didn't think of asking this, but with school, that bad S-word around the corner, are we all set legally with our after-school program? I mean, are there things all ironed out? I know there was discussion here that possibly DCYF needs to review a plan, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll have to say that I believe so, and I will, I will get a more definitive answer and forward that to the council.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Next up, we have resignations and appointments, we have two reappointments, one for Ms. Kier Jensen for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, and one for Mr. John Brady for the Glen Mariner House Authority.
Move to approve both.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero. First up, for old business, we have a public hearing that has not been finalized for, by the zoning board, so we're asking for a continuance for this item until September 10th.
For September 10th?
Seconded. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero, we'll see you on the 10th. Next up, we have monthly police construction report. Mr. Rayner, we'll start with you, is Mark here yet?
Mark is here.
Come right back, okay, so, do I have permission to jump, a motion to move on to old business number three, and we'll come back when Mark gets back?
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero, so, Ms. Mills, you're up. Monthly finance report for July.
Honorable Counsel attaches the budget update for July 2018. This update represents 8% of the current fiscal year. Overall revenues are currently at 4%, slightly higher than last year. Expenditures are at 9% of the budget projection, slightly higher than last year as well. There are no significant Y or ACH transfers to report.
Anybody have questions on one month of the year? If not, do I have a motion to receive and place on file?
So seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Are we ready, Mark? Go on to, back to old business number two. How are you? Sorry, we had to skip you real quick.
It's been a while since I last appeared before you. For the record, my name is Mark Zawatski, and I'm with ABM Group LLC, and for the past year or so, we've been serving as your owner's project representative for the new police station project. As your, as your OPM, our sole interest is protecting the town's interest in the capital project. We are your eyes and ears, we are your watchdog, with the following limitation, that we document what has occurred, we look at what's planned, and we give advice and make recommendations as we move forward. We don't make the decisions, you do. So with that preamble, I know that you've received our monthly owner's project managers' report, and I look forward to taking any questions that you have as they pertain to time, money, and quality.
His first question is somewhat answered, because I see shingles up on the roof now, which is obviously holding up the entire project because we can't do anything underneath because we can't get everything wet underneath. Are we going to be able to make up some of that time that was lost due to this roofing delay?
We hope to, we've been, I've been working with the contractor, also as part of your package, you receive the contractor's monthly project schedule. I am meeting with them on Wednesday morning at 8:00 to talk to them about mitigating any delays that have occurred, how to resequence certain events, and just basically drill down into all the details. The contractor just remobilized today, the roofing contractor, that is, and they ended up with a replacement roofing contractor in lieu of the one that had been involved in the project since day one. But the new roofing contractor will own it soup to nuts.
Okay. Mr. Keston?
Are you? Is he going to soup to nuts due to the original bid?
That's not our concern. The general contractor-
It is mine.
What, the town of Portsmouth will not pay one penny more as a result of whatever price this replacement roofing contractor and the general contractor have come to terms with.
Okay. A couple things, looking at page one of your, of your memo, you have an $8.6 million figure, subject due to date.
That is solely for the general, for the general contract, that's not the overall project budget.
Correct. When I, when I go to your page four in the same document, which is the AGM project budget sheet listed 2002, I think I see 8727?
That's correct.
There's a difference?
Well-
And what is that?
Happy to explain. On the front sheet, you'll see that the base contract was $8,310,000.
Yep.
Also listed are change orders one through eight. One through eight, in the aggregate, total $321,285.75, which is 3.87% of the construction cost. On page four of the document, that $8,727,955.49 number includes projection to complete, which is items under review, which is PCR 16R2, PCR 41, other PCOS that are anticipated, as well as an order of magnitude savings for paving. So what I did was, not only I gave you where we were at a current snapshot in time, but also gave you a protection, a projection to complete, and that's why the two numbers are slightly different.
Again, so, so help me out, because I'm not a real good numbers guy, but how do we get a $40,000 savings if we have to pave it some, out of some other budget? Is that, that's not really a savings, correct?
That's correct. This would be a reduction to this project budget, but it would be offset by an additional cost somewhere else within the municipal budget.
And you-
But in a future year.
And you have no say on where this comes from, but yet the project team determined that that number needed to happen in order to stay within budget.
Okay, as I said at the outset, sir, we make recommendations, I take direction from town staff. So what we see on page four is a snapshot in time, is a budget as to where we are now with change orders one through eight. The items beneath that, the PCR 16R2, PCR 41, other potential PCRs that would be forthcoming, and a potential order of magnitude savings for the town to do that. None of those things have come to fruition yet, sir. So those are options that we are presenting to the town for your consideration. We are not dictating to you how you reallocate money within the town's budget. We're just giving you options.
Understood. So this contract could grow to $10,27,684, which is the, which is the furthest number down if we don't realize the rest of those savings.
Correct, sir.
Is that the way I read that?
Yes, sir.
Does that include, does this, this number cannot include the delay that's happened by not doing the roof, right?
There was a delay claim submitted by the contractor, the architect has formally rejected that, so there is no financial impact to the town that the town is willing to accept as a result of a claim. A claim has not been turned into fruition, it's just a, it's a claim by one party. The architect has rejected that claim.
Okay. But the schedule went from September 29th-
To January.
To January, I heard December.
Well, the, the move date on the schedule that was transmitted to you, I believe, is January 3rd or 4th.
That's new to me. And because-
It was within your packet, sir, so I-
Yeah, I, again, you know, you're reading through it and trying to find out-
Certainly.
-what makes sense and what doesn't. So because of almost a four-month delay, there's no more cost growth, is what you're telling me, if this savings is realized?
Right, what I'm saying is that the delay claim that the contractor submitted was formally rejected by the contract, formally rejected by the architect.
Thank you.
On line item 79 on page four of the schedule, the move occupant date from old to new is January 2nd through January 4th. However, as I indicated, I'm meeting with the contractor on Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM to review the schedule update and attempt to mitigate it and ameliorate it such that we can actually compress some of those line items to move those dates back.
So how I realize, how I read this schedule is there's an arrow that indicates the move? Is that the indicator that denotes- Is that the indicator that denotes the, the-
No, it's in text on line 79. Move occupants from old to new.
Understood. But that was originally September, right, in the timeframe?
The original contract indicated a September completion date. With the initial delay claim as a result of winter conditions and unsuitable soil material, we gave them no money, but we gave them a 30-day time extension, which moved that out until late October. So, this adjustment, or this new schedule, which is the contractor's schedule, which has not been accepted by the owner, has not been accepted by the architect, indicates a delay to January for completion of this phase and occupancy. That's the correct way to interpret that, and we will do whatever we can to mitigate that delay.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Kessin?
Just so I can understand your, your lingo here, the, what are PRs and PCRs, please?
PRs are proposal requests. They are documents that have been generated by the architect. PCRs are potential change requests, which are documents, also known as PCOS or change order requests, or there's a variety of terminology, but the PCRs in this case are submitted by the contractor because of a changed circumstance. It's a request for additional funding.
Okay. So, the architect is trying to do value engineering and doing these PRs, and then based on site conditions, day-to-day workload, your contractor is presenting these PCRs for additional, potentially additional money?
That is correct. And so, I guess what I'd like to point out is that the architect has generated more than 40 PRs, proposal requests. The vast majority of them, of those, are, were, are and were oriented towards cost-saving alternatives, value engineering, value management, seeking ways to save the town as much money as possible. And so, there were a number of them that were very favorable, and we took advantage of them.
Do you think that we're on the other side of the bell curve as far as coming up with more PRs to save the town more money?
Yeah. Based on where we're at in the project, at 50% completion, the opportunity to save additional monies is greatly reduced.
Sure.
I think I, at our last September meeting, I showed you what I call the cost certainty curve, and we're very, at the very bottom of that slope, where the opportunity to save money is greatly diminished.
Okay. And lastly, because, like other people, I didn't think we were going to have a final shiny white roof on this building. What is the final product? Is that, is that a membrane that's on there now?
No, sir. So, the, the final roof on the sloped portion of the roof that faces, faces the roadway-
Yep.
-is a GAF Timberline Architectural Grade shingle. And on the small, flat portion of the roof that's on the backside where the mechanical equipment is, that's a 60-mill EPDM rubber membrane roof.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Just for you? Sorry, I looked down first.
That's okay.
So, from what I understand from the conversation that you just had with Mr. Kessin, the items under review that you talked about on this page that has the budget that we're looking at-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The page that has the budget, the one that we're looking at up on the screen, from the conversation you just had with Mr. Kessin, you were talking about the items under review, and you said they're under review, and you're just, you suggested them, or somebody suggested these items?
Okay. So, let me, so PCR-16R2, the R2 means revision number two. We've been at this for a while.
Yep, I got that.
So, in an attempt to mitigate costs, to save money from the original bid date and bid opening, we attempted to do a significant amount of value engineering. So, these are reduction, even though they're adds, I don't want this to be a situation-
No, I understand that. I got that whole part.
Okay.
I'll save some time here. But you said that they're not set in stone yet.
They have not been converted into a contract amendment-
Right.
-by the town. And no signature appears.
So, you are waiting for direction from the town as to whether any of these are going to be implemented?
Okay. Let me, let me be totally clear.
Okay.
These items are under review. There is, were changed drawings by the architect in an attempt to mitigate costs and to reduce the overall project budget. The contractor responded. It's then the architect's responsibility to evaluate those PCRs. If they're electrical components, they go to the electrical engineer. If they're plumbing components, they go to each of the individual subconsultant specialties. If it's dirt, it goes to the civil engineering concern. So, in each and every one of these cases, they are under review. We have not determined that these are the costs that will be attributable to the project. Rather, they are under review, and we will be responsible for make, for converting this into a change order after we validated the costs and agree that this is a proper reflection of the changed work that we asked them to do.
Okay. My concern is the top coat paving?
Yes.
So, is that still under review?
Yes. We have not actually received a formal change order request from the contractor for that. That's why I called it an OME, or Order of Magnitude Savings. My job is to bring you options, to bring information to the table. It doesn't have to be done. It's just something that we threw out as a-
That you threw out?
Yes. This was a owner, project manager request, suggestion.
I would be totally against that suggestion, because the top coat is meant to protect the base coat, and if you go through the winter, you're going to have to, you're going to lose the base coat. And then it's not going to be a $40,000 savings. It's not a $40,000 savings anyway. It's a $40,000 put-off, but it's really going to be more than that, because if you wreck the base coat, you're going to have to redo the base coat, correct?
No. Respectfully, I would disagree with your assertion. Many, many, many projects that are new construction, after significant disruption of soils, allow the base coat to weather through the winter, so that any compaction or compression that occurs through the four-season cycling can then be addressed with the final top coat. So, actually, this can be interpreted as, is providing a better finish next spring rather than rushing to do it this winter, before the soils have had a chance to be fully compacted and to have thermally cycled for a full four seasons. So-
It was my understanding, when I sat through an hour, I don't know how long, how many hours it was, in a workshop on road paving, that what ruins the base coat is the water getting in it, and freezing and cooling, and freezing and cooling, and it breaks it apart. No.
No, it's, it's not that you're wrong. That's really more with like potholes and stuff. What, what Mark is talking about is, we're going to get the binder down. They're still going to be working on the building. They're not, I mean, they might be substantially, my question was going to be substantially complete, probably like mid, late October, early November. By then, you're kind of pushing up the, against the window for when you could actually pave, and we'd probably pay a premium if we start to pave much into November, because you're going to be paying for winter mix. So, deferring to the spring from a paving standpoint would, would actually be a, be a better option, just because the schedule got pushed out. It was, if things weren't pushed out the 33 months-
Right.
Then we'd probably be paving in late October.
Right. And this option would not have been offered.
Right. But with the delay, not saying we're going to do the $40,000 one way or the other, but from a paving in the spring, it's a better, it's a better solution.
So-
I would agree.
And then, to Mr. Kessin's point, the $40,000 would come from somewhere else in the budget, so it would look as if this project was within the allocated funds, but it isn't.
Right. What, this overall project budget that appears before you is a snapshot in time. We have been working tirelessly since day one to, to do, as President Hamilton had said to me, deliver this project on budget. We're doing everything that we possibly can. And so, yes, you are not wrong in that if we do not find a small amount of savings, the $13,000 estimated contingency at this moment will yield a project that is not delivered for the $10 million. We're working every day in order to mitigate that and offset that. We're very late in the project, and the opportunities, the monies encumbered are nearly all of them, so the opportunities to save money are greatly diminished.
Right. So, so, so from what I get out of all that, the project is already over budget, because if we don't pave, which is part of the project, that's $40,000.
Right. And as I go back to the items under review-
That we have to find over and above the 10.
I'm not disagreeing with you. Your analysis is correct. You know, as your project manager, often I tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. You've discerned that right on your own, so.
If I, if I could, and we don't know exactly, the $40,000, it was the contractor's paving number, we might be able to pave it cheaper-
Yes.
-through our own resources.
Right. I doubt-
It's still, it's still a shift. It's still a shift.
What, $30,000?
No, I, no. I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the, what the tonnage is, but it's, it's, it could be a savings. It may cost us a lot less. That's the contractor's number. It's not a, you know, that there, there could be a savings.
Right. And we've asked for that information. And again, my paving number was an order of magnitude, just based on our in-house cost estimating as to what a contractor would pay, because one of our divisions is construction. So, we, we determined that that's what we would probably pay if we were doing that. The municipality gets a significant discount over what contractors pay.
What is significant to you?
Well, when we go to buy material from Narragansett Improvement, or like, we might pay up to $120 for a unit, and the town might buy it at $60 a unit, so that's 100% savings.
Yeah.
So, it's probably half.
Could very well be.
Could be half.
We don't know.
So, we're still $20,000 over budget.
Well, no, that would be-
We don't know yet.
We don't know.
We don't know yet. But I think what Mr. Zawatski is saying is, he's just trying to tell us the facts. These are the numbers. They're working hard to bring the job in under budget. There's been some, clearly, there's been some change orders, there's been some unforeseen conditions, and, you know, it's, he's up against it here, and I think he's probably been trying to work, you know, pull a rabbit out of his hat here to make this thing come in under. And we still have some issues to deal with, you know, from our end, on the decision side. He's just, he's just the messenger at this point.
I understand that he's just the messenger. It doesn't make the message any more palatable.
Has the, and you might not be able to answer this, but has the demolition contract gone out the bid yet for the old building?
The demolition contract is under Bentley's base bid. Therefore, they, it was bid last year and was part of the award, and it is already included. Included within that is a small amount of abatement of hazardous materials-
Right.
-that were identified during the pre-bid survey. And within the overall project budget, there is a line item for $7,500 to abate and remove an underground storage tank that was discovered, that was unknown condition. If that UST underground storage tank is abated and removed, for $2,500, this $5,000 that goes back into contingency. If it costs 10 grand, you know, we'll find another way.
Are there any other potential savings you could see in terms of time knocking down the building, or value-engineered solutions to get the thing down faster that would save some money?
The demolition of the building, it's a very small building. It's going to come down in just a couple of days.
I understand.
So, the answer to that question is, as it relates directly to the demolition of the existing building, no, sir.
So-
Anybody else have questions for Mark?
I've got one. So, PCR-16 revision one started out as trying to save $137,172.12.
No.
I thought that was a value-engineering number that you were trying to save.
It was. It wasn't a reduction of $137,000. I guess the best way- I'd like to make a suggestion. You can tell me, no. I meet on a regular basis with town administrator, with the chief of police, with EPW, with staff on a regular basis to go through the minutia of each and every occurrence on this project. I was under the impression that my presence here is to give you the big-picture perspective on things, not to drill down into the minutia of each and every line item. I know that it has been reported out to you that on bid date, we faced numerous challenges. We had a detention package, that we had an allowance, the bids came in significantly over that. PCR-16 was an attempt to mitigate the cost impact, the several hundred thousand dollar cost impact by the detention package overrun. And so, 16R, 16, 16R1, 16R2, and others were all an attempt to mitigate the significant cost increase, significant cost overrun that would have been created as a result of the detention package as originally designed and specified and contained within the contract documents. So, even though it's $137,000, that's actually a several hundred thousand dollar reduction from what it was in the contract documents. It's the easiest way for me to describe it, because there are a lot of moving pieces that are contained within that.
Again, most of, most of these, I've found definitions what, what a, what a PCR was, what it involved, whether it was Aztec, you know, boards, trim boards, as in, as in 41. PCR-16R, it'll look like we had to do a change order for $50,000. The remaining savings looks like 86. Is the 86,000 still a real, a real number that we're going to have to pay?
Yes.
If it's not a savings?
It is not a savings, and it's real money that will be part of a change order. The question is, is it 86? Is it 82? Is it 75? It's under evaluation by the architect and all of their subconsultants.
Is that included in the $10,27,694?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was trying to determine.
Okay. That goes back to the original question about $8,727 versus the 8631.
Any further questions? Obviously disappointing news. We were hoping to have a new police station in October, not January. Anything, and I'm not holding you responsible for this, because you're not banging nails or putting up bricks. But anything that you can do to help the town to get this done more expeditiously, but done correctly? I don't want to be back here in three months saying, we got another change order because the roof fell apart, per se, or the roof leaked and destroyed the new furnace. So, let's get it done right rather than getting it done fast.
Quality is our job one.
Thank you.
I appreciate those words. Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Mark, thank you very much.
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Onto old business number four, discussion of the breakdown of special revenues. Some explanations that were brought up in the last July meeting, I believe, from 7:23. Ms. Mills?
Hello. I'll just summarize this. The bill-listed expenditures for 2018-19 dated 7/13/18, Ms. Liz Pedro asked about the lease payments from California First National Bank. They were lease payments for the town hall computers and software accounted for in the finance budget. Special revenue funds. Questions was asked, why do we have due-to forms? Basically, this is, this account is used to track activity between funds. Special revenue funds do not have, the current active ones do not have separate cash accounts. So, therefore, the cash is deposited in the general fund, and there's due-to forms within the special revenue fund from the general fund. Further explanation on the Prudence Island ferry dock repairs. Mr. Kessin would like further clarification on why the repairs were booked in the special revenue fund. Did a little research back to all the town council meetings. The money was earmarked for the Prudence Island dock repairs. It was transferred, quote unquote, in 2017- It was transferred, quote-unquote, in 2017 in the form of a due-to-from, as a contingency fund in the special revenue fund. Technically, it would have been a better classification to leave it in the general fund as a restricted fund, because special revenues funds are literally what they are for special revenue from government, intergovernmental, government activity, not to appropriate, you know, certain capital improvements or special expenses down the road.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions on the explanations from Ms. Mills?
Um, yeah. So I understand, I understood that night about the due-to, due-to and from on the accounts. But it means that when it says that it's due from other funds, it means that the money in that account is spent. It's gone. And it's owed.
Well, I will have to look at each different fund. I already analyzed a couple of them. We did receive the funds, and it was sitting in the general fund. Just the general entry wasn't made. So it doesn't necessarily mean that. I'm in the process of going through each special revenue fund to make sure all the general entries between funds are made.
Okay. And the Sherman Trust and the cemetery funds, I'm glad to see that those are in separate cash accounts, which is why you didn't list them to begin with in the other funds, correct?
Yes, because technically, they're no longer considered a special revenue fund, because they're inactive and there's no revenue being generated, so they have to be classified other than special revenue.
And they're meant for certain things, and you can't spend the money, and it's a separate fund.
Correct.
Okay. We were looking into, when we talked about the cemetery fund, I don't know how long ago it was, it was a long time ago. We were talking about looking into historical cemeteries for the use of those funds. I think Gary Cosby was going to do some research into that.
Is there something I don't?
Yeah, I remember that. I'll have to get back to you. I don't remember where we left that off.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where we left off on that, because that was a substantial fund.
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions? Onto old business. I've lost track. My bad.
Five.
Five. We just said five. Four, paving contract.
Five.
Five.
Five, right. I said five.
That's what I did, too.
Yeah.
Brian's already there.
We have a request to award this year's paving contract, which we need to happen, happen in the fall, happen in the spring, again?
What's the...
Happen in the fall, happen in the spring?
We're going to try to do it all in this fall.
Okay. Award the contract to PJ Keating, which came in at the lowest bid of 583, 131, 25, minus a $41,186.20, with the elimination of Shoreline Terrace, which will then go on to first road up next year.
Correct.
So the final cost, final contract for PJ Keating would be $541,945.05 for paving this fall. Move to approve? No? You got it.
Why would we take a road out if we're not at the...
We're taking the road out, because, one, we have, we use our road maintenance out of our paving funds, so right now that pays for our coal patch, our gravel, our stone and stuff like that. And also, two, it leaves me $26,000 to do crack seal for this year. Because that wasn't part of the paving, so we were adding in $100,000, one of your feet of crack seal for $26,000. So that's part of our paving.
Was anybody else asked to take, I mean, that was the lowest number anyways, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second for Mr. Sagiers? Okay. Any further questions on the paving? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Old business number six and seven. Six, we have a request to accept the Wentworth Terrace as a public road and release the road bond. Wentworth Terrace is the last road on the right before you get to the high school.
Correct.
On the Patriots' lane.
Motion to approve release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on. Timeout, sorry.
For Wentworth Terrace.
Premature approval. Ms. Gleason?
This is for Brian. So we employed our own civil engineer to do your as-built drawings, et cetera, other monuments.
We were able to hire the engineer of record, that was John Braggert, so we were able to keep the same engineer of records. Thanks for our town solicitor, Kevin Gannon, to get the funds to get this all approved. But he was the engineer of record, so we got as-bills and monuments all installed.
I'm sorry, as-bills and...
As-bills and the monuments, the granite bounce.
About the Mylar's, did you get those?
Yep, we got the Mylar's, too. Leon already recorded them.
Okay. And that was what we saw in the billing, was around $4,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it was a total, I think it was $8,000. It was half and half. So you paid the first half, well, you paid half down, and then you paid the other $4,000 when you completed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then same for the Cornelius Drive extension, road bond release. Any questions on that one? Ms. Gleason?
In this case, you're expecting the project developer being to provide the town with the monuments and the Mylar's and the as-bills?
Monuments and as-bills have already been given to Leon for recording. The only thing that's left is a 5% performance bond for a one-year maintenance bond for the rest of the project, for one year.
Thank you.
So do you get any motion to include, still hold in the 5%?
Well, the 5% is just if there's any defects after the one year, say, there's a settlement around a catch base, and we saw that 5% bond, to make them go back and fix around the catch base and whatever, but...
So Mr. Kessin's question is, you want this to be, we release it minus the 5%, to be released at a certain date?
One year after.
After today?
One year after this meeting.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah, motion to approve Cornelius Drive road bond minus the 5% to be released one year after the date, right?
Today's date.
Today's date.
Okay.
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Brian. Next up, fun stuff. New business number one, request permission to restore a portion of the stone wall behind the old Bull Barn at the Glen Farms for a Eagle Scout project. Mr. Consella. This is part of your Eagle Scout project. You have to get up and talk to us. Not for long. I think this is a fabulous idea. And, you know, don't stop at 15 feet if you want to go all the way up. Keep going. Is this something you hope to do further on in life? You want to become a mason, or it's just something that you just...
I actually work at Glen Farm, so I'd like to see improvement there.
Great.
Part of that wall has been bugling me for a little while, so I thought I would build it myself for good cause and, you know.
I think it's fantastic, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck. And I'm assuming some guy to my far left is going to say, "I'm all for this and..."
Absolutely. He'll point out some other repairs.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Cole and I have crossed paths in the past when you were a student at Penfield School.
Yep.
And he made me a little miniature version of the school out of wood. You know, he likes to, how many years ago was that? He probably don't even remember it.
Years ago, I don't even remember that.
So he's good with his hands, so that's good.
He should be good. He should be good. The one that you're going to rebuild is one with the pipes in it, in the upright concrete section?
No, it's actually, it's to the left of that. So it's, if you know where the archway is?
Yes.
Between the Bull Barn and the program barn? It's kind of that corner. It's, we're not doing the corner, we're going to do the straightaway to the right of the corner, but we're only going to do about 10 to 15 feet.
Great.
Just because we have-
Only 10 to 15 feet?
Yeah, well...
Time and money.
Yeah.
That's a lot. That's a lot. Wait till you see how hard it is.
And this is all-
Say again?
It's all drywall.
Oh, yeah, no cement. Actually, I think there might be mortar on the top, just to cap it off. It's a taller wall, so we might need that. Other than that, we have the, like a professional stone mason or an experienced stone mason, Rob Ferron, that's going to be coming to help us. And I think coincidentally, he's bidding on more projects there at Glen Farm, so...
Great.
Good deal.
Fantastic.
What other dates you going to do this?
I don't have dates yet. It's kind of just, I'm trying to get permission first, because I might have to change my project if I don't.
Okay. I have a motion to-
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes-
Thank you, Cole.
Seven to zero. Thank you, Cole. Good luck. Next up, a request for an advisory opinion from the planning board for zoning ordinance amendment to schedule and advertise for a public hearing.
Mr. President, I will be recusing.
Okay. Just grab the paperwork from the clerk on your way out. And don't run too far.
I haven't filled out. I wrote a lot of them.
Have recusal.
I'm out now, though, all right?
All right.
There's a moment of rep.
So first up, we need to send this to the planning board for an advisory opinion, and then schedule for a public hearing. Mr. Galvin, you want to come up and let me know what your dates are looking like for planning board? When's their next meeting? Is next week, right? Or this week?
They're not going to happen.
So the next meeting's in September? Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. Gerard Galvin for Donovan Gray Distributing LLC. My understanding in speaking with the staff leading up to our request for an advisory opinion was that the September planning board meeting would be the meeting that they'd be taking a look at this.
Okay.
I didn't get the exact date of that meeting yet, but we're hoping that it's on share. So whenever that occurs, then we'd be looking, hopefully, to the next council meeting after that for a public hearing, if the council wishes to schedule that.
Okay, which would be the...
24th of September, 4th of...
Let's go with October.
I think the discussion with the staff is leading towards the first meeting in October.
Okay. Okay. Ninth or tenth? The ninth of Columbus Day?
We need this one.
Okay, so it'd be Tuesday, the ninth. Okay. Okay. So we have a motion to approve the request to the planning board, and also schedule a public hearing for discussion on the zoning change on October 9th.
So, second.
All those in favor?
I got a question, Mr. President. That's a question of Mr. Crosby. How close are we on the comp plan?
How close are we on the comp plan?
Are we...
We have indicated that we will have a draft for, we will have a finished draft prior to the election.
So we...
So it's not going to make October 9th?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I'm planning, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. It's only 18 years old, right?
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Galvin. Wait for Ms. Pedro to come back?
I choose one.
New business number three, request approval of fire chief candidate. Mr. Rayner?
Mr. President, counsel. I've attached to my memo to you an email from our HR director that outlines the fire chief hiring process, and the cover letter and resume from the candidate proposed tonight. In accordance with the Portsmouth Town Charter, I submit my request to you for ratification of the appointment of Mr. Paul D. Ford of Swansea, Mass. as our new fire chief. I do so without reservation after having participated in a rigorous search process and extensive background investigation. As you know, Michael Cranston, our former fire chief, notified the town in May 2018 of his intent to retire on June 30th, 2018. With that announcement, I began a selection process for a new fire chief. We placed advertisements with the Newport Daily News, the Providence Journal, the Rhode Island Association of Fire Chiefs, the Rhode Island Association of Firefighters, the Rhode Island Department of Labor and Training, LinkedIn, ZipRecruiter, and our town website. The application deadline was July 15th. We received 19 qualified applicants, and our HR director screened each candidate for conformity to minimum qualifications. On August 2nd, nine applicants were invited to be screened and interviewed by a panel consisting of three serving fire chiefs and our HR director. The panel unanimously recommended Mr. Paul Ford, and after an extensive interview, I emphatically agree with the panel's recommendation. I highly recommend the appointment of Mr. Ford as the next chief of the Portsmouth Fire Department. He's an exceptional candidate. He has 35 years' experience as a firefighter, has served as a firefighting instructor at the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy, and has over 10 years' experience in the top of his profession as a fire chief. He is an experienced emergency management director, has an incredible track record of attaining grant funding and managing department budgets. I'm convinced he possesses the educational background, professional experience, and leadership integrity to lead our fire department, and I respectfully ask for your concurrence. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Rayner on the hiring process? I have a motion to approve the hiring of Mr. Paul Ford as our next fire chief.
Move to approve hiring Paul Ford as our next fire chief.
Second.
One question.
Pretty special.
Do we have any finalists from internal? Out of the nine?
Yes, there was a finalist that was formerly internal, but no serving internal candidates made the final.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Welcome aboard, sir. Hiding back there someplace? So chief gets hired, and the first action is to ask for a new ambulance. Next up, we have new business number four, request approval for a purchase of a new 2018 Ford F-550 Lifeline ambulance from the fire department. It's in the backup. Mr. Rayner, you want to go through this real quickly?
Yes. Unfortunately, rescue vehicle number five has, it needs repairs, and it's been deemed that it's beyond economic sense to do so. So as stated in the acting chief Howard Ty's email, a new ambulance can be purchased in accordance with the master price agreement, and the cost of that new vehicle is $253,861. This request obviously represents an unbudgeted expenditure and will require a reallocation of funds within our current budget. The finance payments are expected to be $39,990 for seven years. The Portsmouth Volunteer Association has committed $25,000 to donate to the town to defray the cost of the first year of financing for the new vehicle, leaving $14,990 to be covered by the town. I request your approval to purchase a new rescue vehicle for the amount of $253,861 and authorization to reallocate $14,990 from the $20,000 currently allocated in this year's capital budget for ongoing Glen Farm Koopler repairs.
We have a motion to do so, or a discussion. Mr. Kessin?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm surprised at this request, just going through the last budget, that we deemed a vehicle in this condition, and it wasn't ever brought up in our discussion of the town budget. Mr. Rayner, this $39,000, what I didn't write it down, 970s for seven years, is this a lease, or is this bonded out?
No, this is a municipal lease.
I don't like those, but that's okay. Second thing is, I would like not to do any more delayed maintenance at the Glen Farm and taking the money on the Koopler. I have a different recommendation than Mr. Rayner, looking through the budget. I would like to take the... Help me with the number, $14,991?
$14,990.
I would like to take that from the contingency, which is $29,251 in the contingency budget for the... I would actually like to take all the money, because the grant went away, and take the full $29,251 out of the contingency budget, leave the volunteers with as much as we can, because they've supported the fire department through medicines and probes on each one of the rescues in the last year. So my motion would be that the $29,250 in contingency budget get consumed, and then, I guess...
Contingency or from the Mount Hope Park?
From... It's right now, it was earmarked for the Mount Hope Park, but right now, it's in the contingency fund.
Capital.
I found it in here, in one of the budget pages, and it's $29,251.
I said I just don't want to wipe out our...
I'm assuming that's a cash number, and it's not a borrowed bonded number already.
That's cash that's sitting in that account. The reason why I did not recommend that is we're in the first four weeks of the fiscal year. The purpose of the contingency fund, obviously, this would be a valid expenditure, but the purpose of the contingency fund is to take care of those unknowns. With so much of the fiscal year left over, I'd hate to be in a situation where a heating and ventilation system breaks or something, and we don't have the money to pay for that later, and we're right back trying to find money in the budget. But by then, we may be in a position where the money's already been spent or encumbered. I know it's unpalatable. Those couplers have been there for over a hundred years. We've replaced two. The contractor has the plans and the mold, the price to... There is a depreciating cost now that we did not anticipate that will be associated with repairing and replacing future couplers, so I thought that was the safest bet.
But seeing this was a matching grant for a bond that went away, the money was never going to be spent for anything other than this, right?
He's talking about the Mount Hope?
The Mount Hope Park.
Park project.
So the money was earmarked anyways.
Not the council's contingency fund?
Not the council's contingency fund. It's for the Mount Hope Park.
That was going to be my next question. Which contingency fund?
Well, I think I nailed it, but I don't know that I've nailed it for the Mount Hope Park.
It's in the capital for thirty.
For how much? And when I looked in the budget, I thought it was thirty, and then I found out it was only $29,251.
So is that still? Yes. Because you thought he was talking about another, right?
No.
No. You thought he was talking about a different contingency?
Yeah, there's a reserve.
Right. But this... Now you know which one he's talking about.
No, this is for the Mount Hope Park. This should not affect any of our plan moving forward, other than it leaves the fire department with still money left over from the volunteers, which I think is a good thing moving forward.
Right.
So I want to make sure I got this clear. So you're talking about using the money that was earmarked for Mount Hope Park, using that to help finance this vehicle, which would leave more money in the volunteers' hands?
Correct, because that was a grant that went away. It was a matching grant that we were going to have to have, and it went away.
What was never realized.
I know exactly what you're talking about now. That's that $30,000 that was in the CIP. I know exactly what you're talking about now. However, what we were going to do, even though that grant went away, I know that the ALT is still looking for grants. We just had a meeting with them two weeks ago. Secondly, and I'm more than happy to do this, but we were going to use that $30,000 if we did not get the grant to cordon off the dangerous part of the park where the concrete is falling into the river. It's becoming dangerous, so we were going to propose, if we did not get grant funding, to use that $30,000 to build a fence, do some landscaping, and get the park open.
If we were to take the couplers out of the capital and the multiple other capital projects that are sitting out there right now come in at less money and add up to that $15,000, we'll come back to the council and reallocate that $15,000.
Correct. We would be looking for savings so that we can do that project to schedule. And again, there's $20,000 for the next number of years in the CIP for the couplers.
But that tends to... Every year, they don't get done.
It's like the pavement, it tends to dry up.
I would just... I understand where you're coming from. These projects have been going on for...
It's been going on, yeah, a long time.
Many, many, many years. And as I laid out tonight, in just the last two and a half years, we've done extensive work at the Glen Farm, including replacement of two couplers. So I'm very sensitive to that project. And I can't remember which counselor I had a meeting with when I first got here, and my objective is to stop the bleeding at those Glen Farms, and I think that we're doing that with all the work that we've done in the new concession area. This is... It's not fun to have to come to you and make this recommendation, but I have to balance the priority between a coupler and an ambulance.
I...
There's not a discussion against a coupler and ambulance. I mean, life safety always is number one. It's whether or not the money should come out of the contingency for a grant that was never realized, or we do delayed maintenance again on the Glen.
Right. It's not a matter of the ambulance and the couplers, it's a matter of the ambulance, not even the ambulance, the couplers and the Mount Hope Park. When were you planning on doing the Mount Hope Park project, using that thirty for the concrete and the fence and all of that?
We're waiting to hear back from ALT. We just had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago where we informed that they were not getting the grant, so obviously, the money that was in that capital improvement plan for, as a match, would not be required. However, we were told at the same meeting that he's... Mr. Aladis continuing to look for other grant monies, and just thought any grant that would be awarded would require a match. So we may be in a position where ALT finds grant money, and we no longer have the money to match the grant.
But that project would probably not happen until perhaps the spring. I mean, we're already into...
Still this fiscal year.
But by then, we may know there may be different funds available.
You're correct. I've outlined my logic, and absolutely...
That's why I'm trying to get a feel for when you're thinking about the concrete, the building of the fence, and all of the rest of that. I know you're waiting for him, but even if he gets that decision...
I was only going to let it go so far. It's deteriorating pretty rapidly down there. So at the bare minimum, we would have to use some money to, at some point, put a fence on. It's becoming dangerous, and I'm worried about liability to the town.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we allocate the money as the town administrator suggested, accepting the money from the Portsmouth Volunteers and taking the rest of the amount from the coupler repair.
No.
Second. I'll second Mr. Kessin's motion.
Mr. Kessin's motion needs to be clarified as to where exactly this money is. Definitely the Glen Park money, it's not coming from the contingency.
It's not...
I mean, the Mount Hope Park money.
It's coming from the Mount Hope Park.
Okay, which is not a contingency.
Well, in the budget, I think it's a contingency, when I saw it in this month's budget.
Mr. Aguirre, go ahead.
Could I just offer a suggestion? And I think both sides have made some good comments about where to possibly allocate the money. There may be some savings with some of the coupler work, there may be some savings with a potential grant from Mount Hope Park. Can we move forward with purchasing, going forward with the purchase of the ambulance, and then prioritizing, first looking at where the... If we can absorb the money from the grant for the park. If the Quinnic Island Trust comes back, that money was a match, right?
Correct.
The thirty grant. So if they go for a lesser grant, then maybe there's a lesser match. Maybe we can cobble $5,000 or $10,000 from there, maybe we can save a few thousand off of some of the coupler repairs and still manage to, you know, do as much as we're trying to do with the coupler repairs as well as Mount Hope Park. Just prioritize which one might be where you get the money from first in the event the couplers take all the twenty grand. I still think we move forward with the ambulance, but we just try to manage the other two sources of money.
Certainly, that's a great idea.
It's just looking for a compromise so that we don't, you know... We still try to do it.
Motion to amend Mr. Kessin's motion with Mr. Aguirre's suggestion.
So is the money to come out of the contingency?
I think that, well...
Both the fourteen and the twenty-nine are in a capital improvement budget.
Correct. So the contingency I see right here on the monthly statement for July is twenty-nine, which is a document that's in front of us tonight.
That's the contingency. Council contingency.
That's a council contingency.
Yes, that's not a...
That's not a cap...
That's not a capital item.
Corrected.
Right now, my thought process right now is to do what the town administrator has requested, and then work, the town administrator and all the other capital projects, work to save $15,000 someplace to do the couplers as well. So that's my opinion, Ms. Pedro.
Thank you. I still have some questions. So I'm also disappointed that this wasn't discussed during budget season, because this vehicle is like close to 200,000 miles, and these things just don't happen overnight. Like, it's an old vehicle. Why didn't we talk about this during budget season? I mean, everybody had to know it was wearing out.
I would concur with your assessment. There's nothing wrong with what you just said. One I didn't know, the first thing I did when we appointed Howie Ty as the acting chief is I asked for an inventory and assessment of all our rolling stock. As soon as I got that report, I highlighted in an administrative report to you over a month ago that we had some maintenance issues, that we were correcting them, and we were still answering all calls. Unfortunately, the ambulance was just a bridge too far. It makes no economical sense to repair it. I cannot answer for the logic that went into the development of the fire capital plan prior to now.
So it needs repair... So it needs repair, but it's not dead?
It's dead. It's not safe.
It's dead, okay. So what residual value does it have?
That I have no idea.
Because what are you going to do with it?
Perhaps Howie can take that...
It's going to be auctioned.
All right, so it might be auctioned.
Normally, we put this stuff on muni bid, old cars and stuff like that, but this is not safe to drive, and a lot of the serviceable parts, and equipment from the ambulance will be transferred to the new ambulance.
Well, that was going to be my other question. So you are going to save the stuff in it?
Yeah, all the equipment that's in it will be transferred in the new truck. But there has no... There's no residual value, to answer your question.
None.
None. There's a problem with the motor. It makes oil, which is a problem. There's been significant, through the past several years, there's been significant thousands of dollars spent on that truck trying to fix an engine problem. The last time, a few years ago, was $5,000 that I know of. The problem still exists. It's a ten-year-old truck, like you recognize, it's 200,000 miles on it. The air conditioning system's completely shot, which is required by protocol or by rule and regulations by the Department of Health to have for patients in the back of the truck. It's a significant cost. There's no value in the truck. The frame has a lot of rot on it, so...
So what happens to it?
It becomes junk.
You have the junkyard come and take it?
Right. You're taking it to a junkyard that takes used vehicles, fire trucks, and ambulances, and they crush it. Unfortunately, it's not something that you want to sell to somebody.
They don't give you like $500 for it? Because I know I can take it right over to...
Yeah, when you go and... If we take that...
I can get $300 for it on Fish Road.
When you take that route, there's, of course, you know, you can make money off of sending it to Metals Recycling in Johnston to have it crushed, if that's the option. Sometimes with older equipment in the fire department, I think you all know that we stock them at the public works yard, and we put it on munis bid, we've put things on various publications to try to get people to come and buy. I mean, we just sold the old Hog Island brush truck, which has been down at the DPW yard for three or four years, just sitting there. In July, there's several guys here who helped post that online, and somebody came in and bought it for $1,200, and had to tow it away because of that. We could do the same thing, but the amount of money that we could get, it's tough to assess right now to tell you it'd be $10,000.
Okay.
I can't promise you that. But the truck is just... It's not useful, and it's not worth spending the money.
Okay.
Any other questions for Howie? Thank you, Howie. David? Question, comment?
David Reese, 66, Freeport. While I worked thirty-six years as an engineer, one of the bigger jobs I had at the end was to buy large pieces of complex scientific test equipment, mostly environmental changes, like half the size of this room, and you may have between $250,000 to $500,000, $500,000 for the pieces of equipment. Like I said, mostly environmental. I just was questioning the process. I think you'd probably need a new ambulance, but everything I've heard mentioned is that the truck is bad, and has anybody looked into, you know, replacing the truck chassis? There's a way that does that. I just... All I saw in the backup was a new quote. And what we used to do, we'd get a professional evaluation by a third party. I don't know who did that or whether you did, and that determined its in or out of service capabilities, so that it wasn't somebody that was kind of biased, looking at it deciding they wanted a new one. Then we'd have a professional evaluation by a refurbisher, and that results in a quote. And you get all the upgrades to ensure that the item meets all the new modern test equipment, because we had test equipment, so we would have to have modern probes, you'd go to fiber optics, and all your safety requirements. It's not just a rebuilt old unit. I wouldn't want that ever. And then you get a quote for a new item, and you make sure that all the upgrades that you've asked for and all the new items that are in the refurbished one are in the new one, so that you can compare the two together. That allows for comparison, and that way you get a way to actually compare it. Then the quotes are actually compared for value, to make sure that you're going to give the taxpayers the most bang for the buck. And then there is a residual value, and there are companies that do this. There's a company, First Priority, down in New Jersey, and if they talk about it, said, "Not every department can afford a new," and that's okay. Depending on the original manufacturer, the life of an ambulance module can be two to three times that of the chassis. Remounting an ambulance can be an excellent alternative. Says, "When we remount it, we take the existing module, refurbish it to like-new condition. We ensure that the electrical is up to date, structural issues are addressed, and when it looks just like brand new." Because what wears out, I guess, are the truck chassis? And I agree.
Obviously, on this one.
And frame. I've heard frames, engine, oil trucks, but the ambulance itself, the box, the unit, they upgrade that. That's just a box. So you're basically buying a truck chassis and putting that on there. And I, just as a taxpayer, didn't see that done, didn't even see that looked at as another alternative. All I saw was, somebody said it was no good. This is after budget season. Like Liz said, that shouldn't have been a surprise. I mean, my truck's got $154,000, and I wouldn't, you know, like, expect that to last forever. So I just was wondering, is this the process? We get one quote? Somebody says it's no good, and that's it?
The process you described happened. It was looked into to take the box off and put it on a new chassis.
Where's that in the backup? Because that's a quote, that's a written value, that's a known fact, that's not something that was even mentioned. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here.
Mr. President, we're hired to do a job. We did it professionally. We did it in accordance with procedure. The Office of Management and Budget, the U.S. government, publishes a life expectancy of an ambulance for seven years. We've got ten years out of this. The very first thing we did is we looked to see if we can transfer the module to new chassis. It can't be done, it's too old. What we are going to do is we're going to take all the serviceable equipment off of the chassis, off of the box, and put it in a new vehicle. The new vehicle cost was considerably more. It's about $272,161. So we're going to take over $20,000 worth of equipment off the vehicle and put it on a new vehicle. This is what we do.
Mr. Rainer, you just didn't document it, that's all. If you had, I would have known. And I'm just going by somebody that's reading what I was provided. I'm not giving anybody a hard time. It's just something I had some expertise in and I used to do. And I just questioned the process.
That was the first question I asked. Can we take the box off and put it on a new chassis? As I was approached by-
And if we did all those good things, why weren't they in the report?
The backup just didn't meet muster. Point taken. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I would just like to say, Mr. Reese, myself, engineers, we think alike. I sat down with Mr. Tygey this morning because I didn't see it. The first thing I had on my notes are, where is the repair estimate? So I would agree that the backup was minimal. And I don't believe that there was a final price after my conversation, but it sounded like there were two sources that were reputable that said, "You don't want to put any more money into this truck." And, you know, you're adding water to your oil, so your lifetime of this truck is limited. So I'm happy that, I'm not happy about, you know, prolonging the cubular repairs. And I think that that should be a gray area where we take this money from, whether it comes from a contingency or whatever. I do endorse taking the $25,000 from the volunteer association, which is whittled down to one or two people, and thank them for all that they've done for us in the past, because they did purchase the last ambulance for us five years ago. But this is the last of their money, I would suspect.
Pretty much.
Yeah. So, I mean, the good part about a lease is you've only got to come up with a smaller amount of money as opposed to the whole thing. And this is a good way as any to do it at this point.
Either way, it was going to be a lease or a bond payment for $250,000.
But I think this is pretty much telling our new chief, welcome, and we have some issues to deal with. Keep good records. Tell us what you know.
And keep working those grants that he has been working on.
Keep working those grants.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kessin?
If Ms. Pedro will release the second, I'll release the motion, and we'll vote, and we'll make a motion to go forward with what Mr. Rainer suggested.
Good.
Okay, so I remove my motion. My motion is to accept, motion as presented by the town administrator for the purchase of this new ambulance.
You can stick in there with the direction that any other capital projects that come in under budget, the money could be placed towards group load repair.
I'm fine with that, Mr. President.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to new business number five, which is a public hearing for the 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Comment on and hear testimony from public regarding content of the draft hazard mitigation plan and vote to approve forwarding draft plan to FEMA for federal and state approval. Mr. Crosby.
Sheesh, there were my audience.
A couple of them might have some work to do.
That's a really nice jacket. I love that. Yeah, so as it says on the agenda, we're here to take a comment from the council and hear testimony from the public regarding this draft plan. It's been out for comment, the comment period has been nearly exactly a month, and we're asking the council to ultimately vote to approve the forwarding of the draft to REMA and FEMA for their approval, at which point we get that, and it comes back to you for adoption by resolution. So we are here, we can do a couple of things. Let me introduce Clarissa Mills. She is our contractor who, we got a grant from FEMA to produce this plan, and she is the contractor who helped us do so. We can do a couple of things. We can talk about the when, where, what, why, and how of how this all came about, or we can just launch right into comments.
Anybody on the council have questions for Mr. Crosby? Specifically on the hazard mitigation plan. And the steps, next step would be that forward to the state and federal government to open comment. They may come back and say, "We want you to change X, Y, and Z," and then we start all over again.
Let me interrupt for just one second. We had, we had put out in the press release and so forth that people should contact me, can contact me by email or by phone on any comments that they have. I received two comments, one from Ted Pites, who asked about snow fencing along the state roads, East Main Road. I replied to him that I thought that that might be difficult to, that it, well, that we would add his, make sure this comment was in the appendix, but that it might be difficult for us to bring that about because we're talking about state roads and private property for the snow fencing. So that, we will certainly make sure his comment is in the appendix. And then the other was from Sarah Chergan from AIPC and the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District, and she had a number of things that we did not, I did not reply to her. She had a number of things, most of which I think Clarissa would agree, perhaps-
Best management practices for educating people, you know, remind folks to let water drip when it's freezing out, stuff like that.
But not specifically to be added to the plan before it went to FEMA and REMA. So from there, we can-
And if I may, I just want to express my condolences to Mr. King and his family. I just became aware of this news, and he was an integral and very enthusiastic participant in this hazard mitigation plan. So my prayers are with him and his family.
I imagine he was. He was very active.
Very enthusiastic.
Ms. Suji Fusa?
So I, Clarissa, I did submit comments to y'all on July 23rd.
Yes, I did get your comments and incorporated most of them. So, thank you so much.
Okay. I wasn't sure, because reading this version, it didn't seem, I mean, I'd want to do nothing to stop this from moving to FEMA as soon as possible, but I just was wondering, is there an opportunity to have comments considered that weren't?
Absolutely. So a lot of your comments were, you had further questions that I can answer those questions for you offline. It was more like process and stuff like that, which I understood, but it just, it's better for a conversation. And a lot of your comments were editorial comments, which were very helpful in making this a stronger plan. So I incorporated those as well. So I thank you for your thoroughness.
Anyone else on the council? Any comments, questions on the plan itself?
I know you all read it deeply.
I did, I did page through quite a bit.
I did.
Thank you.
I liked the tables. There was a lot of data missing in the tables. Is that ever going to get filled in?
The timeline tables?
Timeline tables?
Yes, sir. Yep. It will be filled in as we go through this process, in terms of like when we met with the public meeting and when it's going to council.
And there was a lot of money that was needed. Is that financial need?
In regards to the mitigation plans? In regards to the actions? So what we have, we've identified how much money a specific action would cost, and then we earmarked where that money might come from. This is helping the town to plan in the future. It doesn't mean that that money has been allocated already. It just helps with future planning efforts. If grants become available to do these pre-disaster mitigation actions, the town can go through and say, "Oh, we have $200,000. What can we do? Oh, this one was, this action was about $200,000. Let's see if we can put together a match."
But a lot of the tables had dates that had 2018 in it, in the requirement for the money, the need for the money. Are they tied together?
I, can you give me a specific example?
It was like three quarters of the way through the document.
Okay.
150 pages.
Your eyes got blurry.
So that's like-
At 2:00 in the morning, it's pretty blurry.
That's like 100 pages.
So this is all, it's a working document for the town. If there, if it's a short-term action, they want to get something done within zero to three years, they know that stuff that's, you know, they want to get done sooner, and they might have the financial ability to do so. But a lot of these actions are dependent on costs being available from grants and other funding sources.
And we could choose in the next budget year, for example, to select one or two of these projects and put them into the capital improvement plan and work our way through it that way. You'll note that a sizable majority, or a sizable portion of the action items were staff time, me. And so, again, it's going to be a process of determining what time I have to work our way through these projects, the staff time projects.
And then I noted tonight, I wrote down a couple notes, I know that there's money available for the Cistern over on Prudence Island, so I'll make sure that's in here. I want to go back and look at that. You talked about a voltage regulator at Prudence as well. I'll talk to my staff about that and, you know, make sure that those kind of things are in the plan. Just, if it's something you're working on already, by the time it comes to time for the plan to be updated, you can say you've already done it. So I want to make sure those things that are ongoing are in the plan as well.
So Mr. Kessin, are you referring to specific dates? Are you looking where it says, you know, the goal is short-term, three, zero, three years or three to five years?
All of those had money, all of those had money and dates tied to them, and some of them didn't have actions.
So it doesn't have actual dates, it's just that timeframe is zero to three years?
Right.
Well, were you, is the concern, does this plan obligate us to those?
No.
Absolutely not. It's just a, it's a planning document. The reason why we put the costs in there is so you understand, is this a big, heavy lift project, or is this a staff time project, which can also be a heavy lift? But it just helps to organize how big some of these actions are and how small they are. But you are not, you're never held to that number that's for the town's planning purposes. Nor are you held to the timeframe. Again, it helps with the planning purposes.
So if FEMA comments on this, it doesn't obligate, because they set their perimeter on it?
No.
No. What FEMA's going to be looking at is to make sure we included all of these elements. They're not looking at the feasibility of these actions. They're looking at the required elements. And I've had great success with FEMA looking at plans that we've done, and they've, it's just been editorial stuff.
Getting this plan in place with FEMA and them approving it, does that help our chances in the long run if there is, God forbid, a disaster that we're in line for money earlier than other communities who don't have these plans in place?
Yes and no. What this town allows, what this plan allows the town of Portsmouth to do is to apply for pre-disaster funding, blue sky funding. That is optional funding. If there was a disaster, you're getting the money. There's a federally declared disaster. This does not affect that. This is for the optional blue sky funding to help make the town more resilient.
So I'm looking at item number eight, mitigation action, install riprap on the north side of Common Fence Point Boulevard. It's a high action to page, I'm sorry, Manny, 108.
Great.
And I'm just picking this one out. You know, cost is roughly $1.2 million to dig it out, riprap in, help protect basically that end of Common Fence Point Boulevard. So your thought process, once we get this set forth, it'll help open the door so that pre-disaster funding?
Absolutely. By having a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan, you qualify to apply for that funding. And if you have it in your hazard mitigation plan, it looks even better.
So I just wanted to say that, you know, from my, a plan is a guide to future action. And it's not, it's not obligating us to anything. We have, as you've seen, we've put in here priorities for action, high, medium, or low. So this will guide us, you know, as opportunities arise, or we decide that we want to do something like one of these and actually put it into the capital improvement plan. We have prioritized these actions to pick the most important ones first.
And the plan is updated every five years as required, unless the town chooses to update it if there's a change in something within the town, but it's reviewed every year as well.
Mr. Aguirre?
Just a couple of just quick questions on, and I know just generally the idea is to try to document as much of the prior storm events and things. But it didn't seem like we've captured any of the more recent storms. Like, there's, the last of the nor'easters, I think, was listed as 2011. But I mean, we've had a lot.
We had four.
We've had a lot of big storms that have kind of hammered us. And I forget which year it was where we lost power. The power lines went down on the golf course.
On the golf course, that was five years ago?
Five, and we were, you know, we were paralyzed for a little while. So those are the kind of ones that have just, you know, just looking at the big picture of just trying to capitalize on. It seems like the storms are getting more frequent and higher intensity, and those are the ones that are catching us. So it's really just trying to reinforce that because we're out on the island here, when that nor'easter comes, we get hammered.
Absolutely. And, you know, I'll take a look at that and beef that up a little bit. You know, the plan is only as good as the people that supply comments. You know, people like, "Oh, yeah, we had a storm. What were the damages?" "Oh, no, we had some flooding."
That one, we were on, a lot of people were on generators.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's included in there. What year was that, do you think?
Page 34 seems to take us up to March of 2017, though.
I was on page 29 looking at the nor'easter section.
Oh, okay.
It says storm history. And, I mean, a lot of it, yeah, there was a thing about, we talked about the 78, but I think we've had some pretty good storms over these last few years that have, you know, kind of caused some havoc during the winter.
Yeah, check table nine.
But I think, I agree with you 100%, we can't beef that up. But I think that just because we haven't included more recent storms, doesn't mean that we haven't kept implementation or action items in here that would, that would change necessarily because we haven't captured. That's exactly right. I think we've covered all our bases, regardless of- Correct. And we have done so, and there are not any, I don't believe that we've identified any new vulnerabilities based on more recent storms, or our lack of noting more recent storms.
Yeah, there's a lot of, the snow section happened, but I was looking up under the nor'easter section.
Yeah, it gets very, you know, you start splitting hairs. Snowstorm, a nor'easter, did it bring snow? Did it bring rain? And that sort of determines where it falls.
And I'll be curious to know, I'll be curious to know whether FEMA or REMA says you need to include more recent storms that-
You're just not old enough to remember all the storms.
You're going to 38 or 78? 54?
Mr. Mark?
Right, but we also want to make sure the history is accurate as well.
Dr. Ryan, do you use your microphones on?
Sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Actually, it could have been a hurricane.
We may get a comment back from REMA or FEMA that says exactly what you've said, is that, you know, we need to put in more recent storm information.
Yeah, they may get through their history and say, "You're missing this one, this one, and this one."
We'll add it, we'll add it before they see it.
Sure. But it's, I mean, overall, it's a dive, it's important for us to get it in. That'll help us get hopefully potentially funding down the road.
Mr. Robert, you have a copy?
Yes.
Behind you.
I just want to mention something about the storms in Apollo going out. It's the trees coming down on the lines. And the trees do not get trimmed. You can drive down our roads and see trees that have no leaves on them. They're dead. And then the storms blow the trees down and takes the power out. All right? That's the main reason with the power problems, not the storms.
Yeah, but-
The storm.
Yeah, but, I mean, any wind can bring a tree down.
National Grid did a lot of trimming in town, probably three or four years ago. But it's been a while, but they're going to come back and look at some stuff. Unfortunately, the big one was just a pole snapping that they replaced with a helicopter, I think.
Intimidating.
No, no, the one that fell on, the one that fell across on Montauk. And they had to come back in with a helicopter, drop the pole back in place.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think that was a hurricane. Yeah. Because it was hot.
I'm good.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve forwarding the draft plan to FEMA for federal and state approval of the 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Any further comments, questions from the audience? This is a public hearing. I got to say it three times. Anybody else? I'll ask everybody specifically. Mr. Woodhead? Mr. McGaw?
No, he participated. He should be good.
Yeah? Okay. One last time. Do I...actually, David, if you repeal your motion real quick, because I need a motion to close the public hearing first.
I'll repeal my motion.
Thanks.
All right, most of you closed the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero now, Mr. Gleason.
I'd like to make a motion to approve forwarding the draft plan to FEMA, the draft plan of the 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan to FEMA for federal and state approval.
Second, just for a second time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Very nice job. Next up, we have a bunch of correspondence. We have a letter of congratulations for achieving our Work Smart 21 goals for the risk period, April 1st, 2018 through June 30, 2018, from the Director of Health, Safety, Risk Management for Island Interlocal Trust. We have a...
I have a question about that one.
Okay.
How are these funds going to be used? I see leases here.
We get, I'm on the safety thing.
Okay, great.
You get $500 for this particular thing. So we look within the group to decide where it should go, should go towards a safety thing. If there's a specific thing you want to fix, we...
So you haven't really decided yet?
We have two that really we have, but we didn't have our last meeting, so our next meeting is September 14.
So something like the walkway out front needs to be fixed, and that costs $500, you do that?
We have $500 awards that we received, so we have about $100.
Oh, you have two? Okay.
Great. Nice work for being safe. Let's keep people off of workers' comp. That's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, then we have a certificate of special recognition from the joining of the state e-permitting online portal from Governor Gina Raimondo. Update on the land trust, our east Bruce Acres and Little Creek Preserve. We have a preliminary...we have preliminarily been selected to receive a $22,000 grant from the Rhode Island Community Development Block Ban Program to support Prudence Island Cistern, and an administration $2,000, $20,000 for the Cistern. A letter of congratulations on being named one of 12 Rhode Island Communities to receive the 2018 Tree City USA recognition from Arbor Day Foundation from Jack Reed. Invitation to attend a special dedication for Grace Union's bench on September 20th at 2:00 at Glen Park, and a year-end report from the Aquinic Island Planning Commission. I have a motion to receive all of those in place on file.
So I have one I'd like to move up.
Okay.
AIPC.
All right, so say one through six, Mr....wait. You got another one?
Yeah, number three.
Okay. So, receive on place on file, items one, two, four, five, and six.
So... Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Request from Ms. Pedro to put item three?
Actually, that's from a citizen that's not here tonight.
Okay. But you're officially doing it now.
I may not be here.
And item number seven. That's fine. If you're not here, it'll be on the agenda in two weeks. And then the bring the AIPC year-end report forward for the next meeting.
Yep.
A motion to do that?
Motion to do that.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Our future readings, we have the September 10th meeting here in the Town Council chambers. September 15th, we'll be traveling over to Prudence Island for a Saturday meeting, all but one of us, or two of us in the room, as far as I know, right?
I don't think I'm going to be able to go to that meeting.
Well, Little Birdie told me you're getting married, so I would suggest you not go to Prudence Island.
Yeah. Might not be... Might not be prudent.